There we go. That's what I'm looking for. You're on, Marie.
Okay, welcome everyone to the workshop of the Cool Spring Village Board. For those of you on Zoom, if you could keep yourself muted. We are going to be first going into short-term rentals and then if time permits, we will go into review of minutes. During the short-term rental conversation, we will not be taking questions. If we, if time permits and we go into review of minutes, we will take questions after that. Okay. So we have two documents in front of us, the old 100 and 100A. So Fran, what would you like to start with?
I just looked through one, the old 100 and there still seems to be a lot of comments hanging out. So I think we should start there and I may be flipping back and forth so that I can make sure that everything's captured in the new one.
All right, I'm gonna open them, open them both in front of me. I'm, yeah. I moved over, there were comments that Dave made this morning regarding insurance when we get there and I moved them over with the response from Jeff.
And I also got a response from Karen this morning later, which I just noticed because it hadn't come through. So when we get to insurance, I'll read that too. Okay.
Fran, you want to take us through this?
Okay, first question is, is the title of the chapter singular or plural? Short-term rental or rentals?
Rentals, plural, I would think.
Plural, plural, please, plural, plural it is. Easy. Okay, we're done. We can go now. In the definitions, the first, the definition of hosted, I just added short-term rentals and I believe I did that with the unhosted also. In the definition of short-term rental, we're on page three. The definition included a part that said for a period of no less than two nights and no more than 29 consecutive nights, since this does not apply to the provisional or the one term. I think we should take that out. If everyone's good with that, I'll pull that.
Wait a minute, I'm trying to catch up. You're looking at, you're looking at one, original 100, not 100A, right?
Not 100A, yeah.
Okay, sorry, just give me a second. I'm trying to get them both open in front of me. I wasn't sure which one we were going to be working from, so I didn't prep.
Sorry, yeah.
That's okay. All right. So now you're looking at what page?
On page three, the definition of short-term rental. I'm just one of the part that's highlighted for a period of no less than two nights and no more than 29 consecutive nights. I think we should take that out because that does not apply to the provisional permits or the special one-time ones. So that should not be in the definition of short-term rental.
Understood.
Okay, so that comes out.
Yes.
Agreed.
All right. Okay, space. Okay, any residence, the word, the word was changed from any space to any residence. It's the same definition. That sounds fine. Anybody object? If you object, just holler. Okay, the definition of special, it did say special provisional short-term rental permit. I had changed it to special one-time because provisional to me just like sort of didn't make a lot of sense. But now the definition seems to be very long. So should we just call it, take out the word special and just make it one-time? Short-term rental or take out the term one-time and just leave it special?
I say take out special.
Take out special, anybody?
Um, can, I would like to
Leave it?
Provisional for a second to get an exact definition of provisional. A range or existing for the present possibly to be changed later relating to the, well, no, doesn't need, don't need anything about the Irish, looking at army.
Geez, Kathleen.
A range or existing for the present possibly to be changed later. So provisional does not seem right.
No.
Um, but so I still question, I still question whether why a person can't spread it out during the year, those 14 days, but I think Marie's response to that was, well, then they should just get a short-term permit. Yeah.
Right, either a hosted or an unhosted, yeah. I mean, I think this was in response to people saying, I like to rent my place when I go on vacation, this pays for my vacation. Or I like to rent my place for West Point graduation.
What about temporary?
Temporary meaning temporary, temporary.
You're not renting for a full.
But temporary to me would mean it's a temporary permit. So it's good for, for what?
For consecutive nights in any calendar year.
What, what objections do you have to one-time short-term rental permit?
I don't necessarily have an objection. I was just trying to get tighter on.
Temporary to me doesn't fit.
Yeah, it's one time, up to 14 days once.
Please.
Um, in this case, I, I feel like taking out special kind of does a trick because I don't know what special means in this case, but I think one-time and temporary kind of similar, but one-time maybe clearer on the kind of takes care of the special part, if you will. So I'm good with one-time.
We're going with one-time. Sorry, I'm sorry.
That is quite a ring.
I like that. I have nice music. That's my brother.
He doesn't call too often.
Okay, so that takes care of that. I just need to make a space here. Okay, next, the definition of street, back and forth, back and forth. Do we need it? Do we need to put a location for the map? Um, I sort of think that street is a street is a street. I mean, do we really need to define it? I know that I looked in the, in the document and the word street is used nine times, but do we really need to define it, a thorough fair?
Well, since you've removed the, the table, it doesn't seem as important.
Okay, anybody, okay, was just
Finding the, the distance on tape, the table.
Okay, so just okay, we're just taking this out?
I'm sorry, Kathleen, you said, since we removed the table, what table?
There was a table that assigned numbers of, there was originally a table.
Ah, yes, 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 okay. Yep. Many moons ago, okay.
So, okay, removing the definition of street.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, we deleted that. Okay, adding short-term rental, the words to the unhosted definition. Okay, short-term rental during which the host is.
Sorry, Fran, if, if, if you leave in or any part of the term, unhosted could be construed to mean hosted.
What?
If you, if you leave in or any part of the term, unhosted could be construed to be the same as hosted.
Right, okay, so we could take that out.
Yes.
So it's just, short-term rental during which the host is not present on site during the full term. Is that fine for everyone?
That's fine for me.
Take that out, everyone okay? The title of section 100-3, short-term rental classifications, I just moved the word fees around. And I just, we put in, I took down from what was up above the definitions that we had. Now, I know there's a question, I think Dave said today something about switching the 17 hosted to 34 hosted and 17 unhosted. I, I believe that, is that something that he said? I know he threw a couple of things out today and I was another one.
Let's look at 100A.
I'm sorry?
I'm looking where, where he put the comments.
He actually put his comments in 100, I believe. So, but he sent something in the email? I don't know, I heard it, I thought I heard it and I apologize because
It's, it's at the bottom. It's at way at the bottom.
At the bottom of 100?
Yeah. Let me see.
I see comments from Dave related to the
At 11:30, at 11:30.
Yeah.
Okay.
What, change, Marie, rather than time?
It pops back up, it's connected to 100-6.
Yep.
B and C.
Yeah.
So if you look at 100-6B and C in the, in the chapter 100.
Sort of suboptimal, give me a second.
Yeah, I know. You have to find it, click on it and then it pops to where it belongs.
What page are you looking at?
We're looking at page seven of the 100 document, not 100A. The original document.
And under 106, I don't see a comment from Dave.
Um, click on B, the total number and his comment should pop up.
100-6, there is no A and B.
No, what are you, which document are you looking at?
I'm looking at 100, the original. And 106 does not have an A and B, 100-.
I'm sorry, 100-7 and I didn't renumber it. Okay, it's, it's, there's two 100-.
Dave says, I would switch these numbers, 34 hosted, 17 unhosted.
Okay, so
How are we?
We're back. So we're back up to 103 because if we switch it, there are going to be multiple places where it has to be switched.
Okay. So the majority think more hosted than unhosted. I think Kathleen, you've been saying that, right?
Well, I think that unhosted, unhosted are the type of short-term rentals that pose the challenge.
Right.
So it seems to me that if you're, if you are wanting to via the code encourage hosted activity, that should be the larger number.
Tweets, more hosted than unhosted?
More hosted.
I'd split it. I'd split it, 25 and 25 or 25 and 26.
And we did have, there was some discussion.
Yeah.
Back and forth this week, there was, there was a, there was a statement by Dave that perhaps unhosted should be unlimited in the way that Rhinebeck is. And that the focus of the legislation should be on the problematic property, which is unhosted.
Okay, so as of today, the last I saw was put 34 hosted and 17 unhosted. I'm not for leaving it unlimited.
So can I ask, I, I, we are having this discussion trying to represent what Dave's position is on this.
No, no, I'm sorry.
No.
I mean, I, I don't think we're trying to represent his position. We'll get his position when he's, he was on the next call when we discuss this.
Okay, so here he says, I would switch these numbers, 34 hosted, 17 unhosted.
Right, and so that's up to us to figure whether we want 34 or 17, 17 or 34, half and half. I'm good for 34 hosted, 17 unhosted, Kathleen?
I would, I would focus, I would focus the, the, the regulation on unhosted and, and not have a limit for hosted, but limit unhosted in the same way that Rhinebeck has done.
See, I'm not for, because we've added an unlimited amount of, we've added a one, unlimited amount of one term.
Well, I mean, you asked, you asked what my position is and that's my position. If there aren't other, if we don't have, that's not the majority opinion, it's not the majority opinion. That's, but that's the position I would take.
Okay, tweets?
Um, can I ask, um, what your, these numbers, again, I feel like I might have asked this question before, but where did these numbers come from? Where is this 34?
The original, the original 34 was 5% of the properties in the R1, I1 and MB1 areas. We, when we broke up the hosted and unhosted, we decided to have half the original 34 plus half more. So that's how we came up with the 17.
Got it. And so 655 was the base number we were working with, right?
Right.
And 5% of 655 is 32.
Right, I think, I think there was I1 properties, you know, so we went up to 34. So then we added half more and then we added the one-time short-term rental also, which is an unlimited number. So that's sort of where the numbers came from, tweets?
Okay.
It was a percentage of the properties within the areas of the village that are in, that are included in this, in this law.
I mean, I think, I, I agree with the, I, with the fact that what we're trying to get at is the unhosted. Because the hosted, I would assume are the ones who are, you know, gonna be making sure that things are okay and taking care of the property and the guests and such. So I feel like 5%, I mean, I don't know, it seems, even though I get where you were going with it, it seems a bit arbitrary. So but I do think that the number of, of unhosted should be obviously a smaller amount. What that number is, I mean, I don't know, I feel like 34 just, just seems so damn arbitrary to me.
Well, for, for, for contrast tweets.
Yes.
But the Rhinebeck code uses 5% of tax parcels, the Nelsonville code, the new code passed in Nelsonville in the spring uses 5%.
Okay.
Um, so there, it is not without precedent and I think the idea is to get to a, to a low percentage of parcels.
Okay.
To limit the impact in residential areas.
Okay. Um, then I guess, then I would agree then because there is this, that other provisional one that, that this, I can live with these numbers.
You want 17 hosted and 34 unhosted or you want the other way around?
I would want 34 hosted and 17 unhosted.
Okay, that's the way I'm going. Kathleen, you wanted.
But now that, that brings you up, you're beyond your 5% now.
I know, well, because when we broke up the hosted and unhosted at the, at the request of all the people who came to our meetings, we added an additional half of the 34 to say, all right, you know, we agree that they should be hosted and unhosted to find differently. We will add some more because people are, you know, doing this and doing it well, so.
So that seems, that, that seems arbitrary to me. I can understand the argument that of 5% for, for unhosted, I don't see how adding 17 hosted has a logic beyond, we pulled it out of the hat trying to appease public comment.
Well, it wasn't, it was half of the 34.
Again, it seems like it's appeasing comment. I mean, I, I'm, I'm in the minority on this one, so it'll be, you can move on.
Kathleen, sorry, I'm just, just to ask a question. So you, you, you would favor unlimited, unhosted? I mean, I'm sorry, unlimited hosted and, and limited, unhosted.
Well, looking at, so, so in thinking, in, in looking at other codes, what they're trying to control for, the impact they're trying to control for relates to homes without hosts, hosts that are not on site to address noise concerns, garbage concerns, parking concerns, right? And so if you, if we have a host on site who is accountable, both via this ordinance and civilly in terms of the, the noise ordinance, et cetera, I feel more comfortable letting, focusing the, the legislation on, on unhosted.
Okay.
Because it seems as if, it seems as if when complaints, when complaints have been received, they've been received related to unhosted properties and
Okay, okay, thank you. That, that's actually, that, that helps clarify in my brain. So that being the case, then I would actually agree with you on that. Because if we're so, so the unhosted folks, not, not about the, the hosted.
So in a different point of view, there is no evidence that says that all of the impacts are eliminated with hosted short-term rentals.
No.
Hosted short-term rentals, you provided an example of where someone who was hosted, running a hosted STR was there when her guests were creating some noise in the backyard and the host was able to quiet them down. Luckily, the host was there. There are going to be times when the host is not there to quiet down the noise in.
But the host, we're requiring that the host either be on site or have an agent who's available within 20 minutes to respond.
And that is true for both hosted, sorry, that is, that is true for unhosted as well.
Right, so, so I'm saying you have, you have the host on, on premises and if the host is not present, you have an agent who can address concerns.
Which is the same that you have with an unhosted.
Okay, so what is your, what is your
My, my point is
About, about, what is your worry about hosted that is different than your worry from unhosted?
My, my worries are the same. That, that's, that's my point. But it certainly density is true regardless of whether it's hosted or unhosted.
Density isn't an impact that having an owner on site addresses. Noise is, garbage is, light is, parking is.
If I could, I, if I could finish, hosted and unhosted have the same parking problems. They have the same noise problems. They have the same garbage problems. They have the same density problems. So I don't see, I don't see where hosted or unhosted it, that, that we should permit an unlimited number of unhosted. In addition, both of them eliminate that space from being occupied by a full-time resident.
Unless it's a bedroom in someone's house.
If, if, if it's just a bedroom in someone's house, someone's house, yes, that, that does not, that, that eliminates the concern about non, about the lack of the space being available to be rented to full-time residents. If it is just a bedroom in a house, if it is a, a basement floor which has all facilities in it, then it doesn't, it doesn't eliminate that. So I don't see that, that hosted should ever get to the point of being unlimited.
So the difference between the two is that someone who lives and owns the property is present during the rental. That, to me, that's a major difference. But I'm in the minority here, so you can, you can move on.
But I'm also, well, you're not because I think tweets is fine. I mean, I'm also of the opinion, I don't mind changing to 34 hosted and 17 unhosted, but we have to also remember, this is basically in a lot, in most of the instances, residential, residential areas. And, you know, for those of us who were at the meeting a year and a half ago, when we listened to many people who were concerned about this back and forth and in and out and up and down and so on and so forth. The density issue is an issue, you know, having property being rented all around you, whether it's hosted or unhosted is an issue. They bought in a residential neighborhood. They didn't buy, you know, for income, they didn't buy as a business. And so, you know, I think, I don't, I mean, I don't mind not limiting, I don't mind not limiting the one-time short-term rentals. That's, that's a one-off. A handful of those, however many are, and you know, they could be all over the place, but I don't think we should just have a whole bunch of hosted short-term rentals popping up all over the place and because, you know, this is
If that's the case, I would recommend that you tie it to a number.
Rather than saying
Yeah, we tie it to 34. And then we, the unhosted.
I would, if you're gonna do it that way, I would tie it to a, to a percentage that's more defensible rather than we, we picked it up, it was half after we got public comment.
I mean, we, we, we can be defensible whether it's a percentage or a number because we said where the number came from. The number came from 5% of the properties.
But your code doesn't reflect that.
Well, we can
Your code, up above, your code says 5% of 655, that's 32. And now here in this section, it identifies 17 and 34.
Okay, so we changed it to 32. So, so we changed it to 32.
So, I mean, we can change it to 32, we can change it to 17 and we can say, you know, we, we've opted for half of that, you know, two and a half percent of, for unhosted. I mean, it's
As long as you're consistent in the, in the document, right? It's more defensible. And remember, you've also got the, you've also got the, the, the linear measurement that, or the radial measurement that is going to disperse density.
Right. Okay, so we're back to, where are we going? 17, 34, 32, give me a number, somebody.
Well, it's just, you need it above.
32, Fran.
32 on the unhosted or hosted?
Hosted.
And then half of that would be 16?
Yes, it is.
So then you, then it's 7.5% of parcels.
Well. Take this out.
Where you have the percentage.
And that is up.
Okay, and then Fran, back up. Where it was stated, the number.
Okay, in the definition, eliminate on certain types of short-term rentals is based on seven and a half percent of the total R1, I1 and B1. I will double check that.
Yep.
Which is 655 at the adoption of the law. Times seven and a half.
It's 49.
Okay, so we, what do we get? We get 16 and we rounded it. 16 and 32 is 48.
49 minus 32.
16 and 32 is 48.
There you go.
So we want to stick with the 17 and we want to raise the 32 to 33, give me a number.
Raise the 32 to 33.
Sweet, she with us?
Oh, you're muted.
I can't hear you. No, she's not, you're not muted, but I somehow, I can't hear you.
Oh.
There you go.
There you go. Sorry, I don't know what happened.
Yeah, it didn't seem to be muted, but, okay.
My goodness.
Moving on.
Okay, please.
Gotcha. 100-3B, all short-term rental permits, application, permit application fee should be listed in the village's master fee schedule. These fees can be changed by resolution. Marie, is that what you were driving at?
Yes, Fran, can, I recommend that we skip B because it's fully laid out in 100A.
Master fee schedule?
Okay.
100B.
Right, okay, it says in 100, in, in the other version, all short-term rental permit fee and application fee shall be listed in the village's master fee schedule. These may be changed from time to time by resolution of the village board. So let me just pop it over so everybody can see it. It basically is going to say that. And this one's coming up. Okay, so the, the new wording that I just put in, is everyone clear with that? All short-term rental permit fee and application fee shall be listed in the village. Okay, good.
Okay, Fran, while you're on 103 in 100A, do you want to go through these or do you want to come, come back?
Let me come back. You mean to change the numbers?
Yeah.
Let, let me come back to it. I'll come back. Okay, so what happened is we deleted the hosted, unhosted and special provisional on, on the bottom and just reworded them up above. So that's just coming out.
I'm sorry, what's
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, we're in the old 100. Underneath what we just talked about, I just deleted the part that was crossed out. Hosted short-term rental, 17 registered fees as stated in the master schedule. Unhosted, can you see it? Crossed out?
I can see it. Yeah.
Got it. Okay, so I'm just gonna approve that as being deleted. Okay, short-term rental requirements. Now, I went back and forth and at this point, I think, if you don't mind, can we flip over to 100A?
Yeah.
Between requirements and regulations, I was driving myself nuts until Marie defined them for me. So if we look at 100- A.
100-104?
I'm sorry, 100A.
100A. One hundred A.
Back up.
The new document.
So one hundred one is purpose.
I'm sorry, say it again?
I'm trying to find you because you're saying one hundred A and I see one hundred dash four as being where we are right now.
Um, okay, I'm sorry, can you flip to the other document? The new document.
Now we're in the new document.
New document, okay.
Only because there's regulations and requirements section, I just moved stuff all over the place. What was a requirement, what was a regulation? Um, and so if we can take it from here.
So at what point, at what point are the changes that you just made in the old document being captured in the new document?
Tomorrow, uh, and I will send everybody the notice when everything has been-
Okay, and so now we are looking at
one hundred A.
I had, I had comments because, because I thought we were working from the collapsed document, I made comments earlier in the document.
Okay, we can go back.
Earlier sections on one hundred A.
All right, shall we go back and start from the beginning on one hundred A?
There are only a few, there are only a couple of them, and one was that under one hundred one, I think D is repetitive and is encapsulated by B.
I, I disagree, I disagree with that because one hundred D focuses on the density. And one hundred B does not mention density at all.
Take that portion, several are concentrated in the same area and collapse it into B, so you're not repeating garbage, noise.
Well, it's not, D doesn't mention garbage or noise.
Incompatible with surrounding residential uses, especially when several are concentrated, thereby having the potential for a deleterious effect on the adjacent full-time residents. So what is the deleterious effect you, that you refer to in D that is not covered under B?
Well, B talks about parking noise and trash. And here, my, my interpretation of this is that the density problem comes up. In addition, although not stated here, one of the concerns that was voiced about short-term rentals is that in a neighborhood, you're used to seeing your neighbors and you're not used to seeing um, strangers walking through your neighborhood um, weekends or during the week or others. And so it begins to affect life in the neighborhood, and I think that D addresses that.
So I would say if you're talking about neighborhood character, be clear that you're talking about neighborhood character, because deleterious effect could be lots of things.
Yeah, that's good. Let's leave it at that, that it's lots of things, but I don't, I don't see incorporating, eliminating D and consider that it's replaced by D.
A, a, as the way you've, in the way you've explained it, I understand what you mean now, I just think if you're, then you should be more specific about what you mean in B.
In B or in D?
He isn't dog.
I'd like to leave it like that, Kathleen.
Okay, others?
I'm fine with this, sometimes we need to leave it broader because once we start putting point, 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 and we miss something, somebody will say, well, that wasn't listed there.
Okay.
So, so I'm good with leaving it broader. Tweeps? Did we lose you?
No, no, I'm, uh, I'm here. Um, I'm I'm a little bit torn, I think uh, it is kind of broad, that term. I'm not sure, I'm not sure how to, how to address, because I, I think I, both points make sense to me that if you list out what the things, trash, noise, parking, et cetera, it makes sense, if you say deleterious, deleterious, then it, that could be up to interpretation, right? What I think is, is annoying might not be something that's annoying to someone else, so I'm not sure how to, how to, how to capture all the potential issues.
Do we wanna reword it to say harmful or dangerous?
Or-
Harmful or damaging?
No.
Incompatible with surrounding residential uses. I think you can, if you take, thereby having the potential for deleterious effect on the adjacent full-time residents. Incompatible talks about use. You could say incompatible with the character of surrounding residential uses. I just don't know what you mean by deleterious.
Right.
I mean, I, in a broad, in a broad sense, I understand what you mean, but but I, I think it's unnecessarily vague.
I like, I like, um, how you phrased it, Kathleen.
Incompatible with the character of surrounding residential.
Because I think that starts to hone in on what we're talking about, that we don't, that we want to protect what we have here, right, but the our home, our neighborhood, our street, so.
You wanna take out this, the last part of that sentence, then by having the potential?
I would say short-term rentals have the potential to be incompatible with the character of surrounding residential uses, especially when several are concentrated in the same area, period.
I wouldn't say character, I would say I would say it's incompatible with surrounding residential uses, not necessarily with the character. With the surrounding residential area, whether, you know. It's not necessarily the character that we're worried about, it's, it's the neighborhood.
Okay, but, but if, but getting to the language that you understand so that people understand what you mean, if we're asking people to comply with the code, they need to understand what we mean.
We also need-
Know they're in violation or not.
We also need to write it so people can't get around it, you know, if you say X, they're gonna say, well, I'm doing Y.
So, this, this is purpose. We're going to enumerate what the requirements are to get a permit, and we're going to enumerate what the regulations are once you have a permit. This is the purpose of the code, not the law of the code.
Understood. And the purpose, the purpose, I think, here from what I understood you to describe, Marie, is, is an issue of residential neighborhood character. Right, that you know your neighbors, that you know who's coming and going, that you have a relationship with those folks, that's about, that's about neighborhood character. That's about, that's about knowing who lives alongside you.
Or nearby you.
Or nearby you.
Okay, so, given that, Kathleen, how would you change the wording here?
So, the, the suggestion, my suggestion remains the same, short-term rentals have the potential to be incompatible with the character of surrounding, surrounding residential uses, period. Especially when concentrated in the same area, period. And then continue to, special regulation of these uses is ne- necessary to ensure that they will be compatible with surrounding residential uses and will not harm and or alter the neighborhood they're located within, I think that's-
Okay, so, um, I would, I would change what you've just said by, instead of saying surrounding residential uses, I would say, um, have the potential to be incompatible with the character of of neighborhoods.
Oh, depends on the neighborhood, might be compatible with Main Street. Might be compatible with, uh, uh, um, right, depends on the neighborhood.
So I still, I still, go ahead, Fran.
Short-term rentals have the potential to be incompatible with the character of the residential neighborhood.
That's what we're trying, that's what we're driving at here, right, we're driving at retaining residential properties available for residential uses, for long-term residential uses, and the, in the paragraph before uh, preserve the residential and community character of the village and its neighborhoods is item C.
Potential to be incompatible with the character.
So are you concerned about it being incompatible with residential uses or with a broader question of character?
I, I'm, I don't like the, the word uses there.
No, I don't either. Um, short-term rentals have potential to be incompatible with the-
But Kathleen, your point is a good one. Reserve, preserve the residential community character of the villages and its neighborhoods. Short-term res- rentals have the potential to be, um, incompatible with the character of the neighborhood, especially when several are concentrated in the same area, thereby having the potential of a, for deleterious effect on the adjacent full-time residents.
Okay, so, so far we've got short-term rentals have the potential to be incompatible with the character of the neighborhood.
Yeah.
We're good with that, everybody, right?
Yeah, and then, yeah.
And then especially when there's several are concentrated in the same area, that's still good, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay. Now the next part, thereby having the potential of deleterious effect on the adjacent full-time residents.
I would leave that in. That's special reg- regulation of these uses is not, where the use here is a short-term rental is necessary to ensure that they will be compatible with, with surrounding neighborhoods and will with surrounding residential neighborhoods and will not harm or alter neigh- alter the neighborhoods they are located within.
I think that saying incompatible, the word incompatible encompasses deleterious effect on the adjacent, blah, blah, blah. Need as many words. Are concentrated in the same area, period.
Several are concentrated in the same area, thereby having special regulation of these uses is necessary to ensure they will be compatible with surrounding residential
Neighborhoods.
Yeah, and will not harm and or alter, uh, they, what they are located within. Special regulations of these uses is necessary to ensure they, the thing is that they're not only, will not only regulating residential neighborhoods, or also regulating these short-term rentals in the B district.
Yeah, and then, and, and the B district tends not to be for residents in the B district, they tend not to be neighborhoods within a building, maybe.
Well, I think that you might have residents of Main Street who'd feel differently about that.
Okay.
Believe that that is their neighborhood.
Right.
It may not be a single-family home, but it's their neighborhood.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, okay, so let me, last sentence, special regulation of these uses is necessary to ensure they will be compatible with surrounding residents. Neighborhoods.
Yeah, neighborhoods.
Will not harm and or alter of the neighborhoods they are located within. Uh, now the, the last part of this is, is this deleterious thing. Uh, short-term rentals have the potential to be incompatible with the character of the neighborhood, especially when several are concentrated in the same area, that thereby having a potential for, um, deleterious effect. Can we get another word on the adjacent full-time?
Fine, with, I'm gonna, I've made my, I've made my case, I would, and I would end the sentence at, in the same area, period.
But there's, if, there needs to be a reason, um, potentially be incompatible with the character of the neighborhood.
That's your reason.
Yeah, but if they're incompatible-
Special regulation is required.
If they're incompatible, uh, then we need to know what, what the downside of them being incompatible, it's just that we don't like them.
Tells you quality of life impacts, parking noise and trash, sometimes associated with short-term rentals. C talks about preserving the residential and community character of the neighborhoods. You, you, it's, it just feels like it's kicking a dead horse in this paragraph.
Tweeps deleterious, that, that phrase in or out?
I say out.
Marie?
In.
I'm good with in, I'd like to change the word, but I'd like it in. Uh, Kathleen, you want it out?
I would, it's that area. We can look up a thesaurus for deleterious, but-
I'm going to just highlight this and, and-
Go to when there's another member to break tie.
All right. Let's, um, yeah, sure. Okay. I just highlighted it, I probably spelled it terribly wrong because my fingers-
Got it.
In the right place. Okay. And we'll, we'll look at it again when I can have more of a grain in my head. Okay, um, Kathleen, I think this speculative, short-term rentals have the potential to minimize the number of full-time residents. In fact, the number of volunteers for such function is, um-
I mean, you could make the same argument about rentals versus renters versus owners.
No, not, not long-
In a community.
Not long-term renters. It has nothing to do with renters as such, it has something to do with, you know, people coming and going and don't belonging to the community.
Well, renters, renters may be shorter term than someone who buys a house for and stays for thirty years.
Sorry, you're saying, you're saying, Kathleen, that the statement that it could minimize, um, volunteerism is speculative, is that correct?
Yeah, I think it is.
And I would say that I've read this, uh, this result in a number of documents or articles about short-term rentals. If it is speculative, then it is, is as speculative as E.
Yes. Well, but you can measure, right, you can measure housing, I'm sorry, I don't know how to, I don't know why it's pinging, it's me, sorry, let me-
Okay, I, I thought it was me, I keep looking around.
No, it's me, sorry, I need to change the setting on it. Anyway, I, I don't feel that strongly about it, I just, I'm just not sure that it's a statement we can make with a lot of ground to stand on.
I mean, it, it has a potential, I'm, I'm good with leaving it in, I mean, it is, you know, I think, I think at this point, you know, fathers cleaning up Todd's Park and people going to, um, I know I sounded very Boston that time. People going, every once in a while, pot comes out. You know, firefighters and so on and so forth, I think that is a potential, I, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure that in this day and age with everybody running to get to work, that you're gonna have a lot of volunteer firefighters, but you are-
Right, I mean, I guess that's, I guess that's part of the point, Fran, is that there are other factors that impact volunteerism, like, like commuting, like one parent being in the home full-time, like, there, there are lots of things that, that impact volunteerism, not just-
I'm thinking of Todd's Park, I'm thinking of things like that where, you know, that is something that, that families will do, fathers will do, um, you know, the fishing, uh, whatever. The fishing thing that we do every year, so on and so forth, anyway. Moving down. Um, H, provide lodging for visitors in the village and support the local economy, this is, um, let me see, purpose of this article is to
Certain, I, I agree that visitor lodging is a goal and supporting the local economy is a goal, however, I don't believe that without reducing full-time residency is accurate.
Well, the comp plan called for increasing accommodations.
Yes, I'm aware of what the comp, I wrote it, so I'm aware of what it says.
You and a lot of other people wrote it. I think that the goal there was that you would, um, um, make a greater access to accommodation without reducing residency, i.e. people sharing, people renting bedrooms.
Yes, that was, that was the thinking when the comp plan was written. However, that is not what we're doing now. With short-term rentals, we are taking apartments off the housing market. And, not we, but short-term rent- rentals take apartments off the short, or houses, off I don't know where that is coming from.
I need to get, I'm gonna get my kid to shut this off, I'll be right, keep, keep, keep going.
Uh, we've, we've only got twenty, twelve minutes left. I, I, I don't see that, that the first part re- does not reduce full-time residency, I think it does. So, I, I would just take it out.
Okay, I'll just take out the bottom part.
Yeah.
Where are we, are we going till eight o'clock or nine o'clock?
Eight o'clock.
Oh, we're doing an hour?
Yeah.
Okay, works for me even better. All right, I'm gonna take this out. Moving on, uh, okay, I highlighted that. All right, um, okay, so this, um, one hundred three I will clean up based on what we did before. Okay, getting to one hundred dash four, short-term rental requirements and permits. We pulled, I moved things between the requirements and the regulations based on the fact that requirements is something you have to have before you get your permit and regulations is the rules you have after you've gotten your permit, thank you, Marie, for- and regulations is the rules you have after you've gotten your permit. Thank you, Marie, for getting my head around that. So B, short-term rentals would be good for one year. I don't think it should be raised to three years. I think that's just not fair to anybody who's waiting in the sidelines.
Yeah, and, number one, and number two, I I thought what we were thinking about was that this is something that we were going to try and see how it works out. Doing a three-year rental now I, I don't think is, is the, is the, the way to go. I think we should leave it with one year. It can be changed to two or three years if we determine that it's working. But I would not put it at three years now.
Yeah, because they were stuck with them people, were stuck with it.
Yes, yes.
I don't I don't see where the comment was made about changing it to three years, but
I'm sorry, are you in one hundred eight? Are you back at one hundred?
There you go, okay, thank you.
Sorry, yeah, that's, that's my fault. I should have like, sort of got them. I will get them together, well, I'll mesh them together.
I, I, I think it's gonna be more productive if we're working, this going back and forth is confusing and, and
Well, I'm gonna stick with one hundred eight at this point, because that's
Or can we, can we, if we're only, Marie's, we're, we're only going until eight, why not stop and reduce the chaos by working from a single document?
Um, I'm fine with, we're working just with one hundred eight now. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, yeah, that's where we've been since we were back up. And I'll stay there and I'll clean up the rest after.
Okay, so now you are looking at what section in one hundred A?
One hundred dash four, B, the short-term rental permit will be good for one year.
You're still on that question.
Okay, so I'm good with leaving it one, tweeps one oh three. I just don't, I don't think it's fair to those who did not get a permit to have to wait three years and also just give up. And those who got them have a chance to apply again and get them again.
Right. That's fair. I think, I think one, one year is, is fine.
Marie, one oh three?
One.
Okay, the question of accessory buildings. I don't think accessory buildings should be used for short-term rentals, especially when they're hosted, because if it's hosted, then somebody, that definition sort of means people are in your house.
Well, so I had a question about that last week. So, so the scenario was raised in which a, a family decamps to a, a garage apartment and rents out the main house. And the concern that seemed to be raised was they're not then on premises. And how will they respond to impacts? And if there are impacts that are intrusive enough to be bothering neighbors, are they not going to be bothering the host in the structure that's on the same parcel?
I, I believe that the argument against an accessory building is, is, is not that. Accessory buildings are meant to be accessory. They are not meant to be permanent living structures. And, and if you take a look at the R1 code, an accessory building is not to be used as a residence, which is what an, you would be doing if you had an accessory building used as an STR.
Except if you were to require that the accessory building have a certificate, certificate of occupancy.
But that's contrary to R1. R1 is a single residence on a property. That's R1 by definition.
And so is there a scenario in I1 or B1 where that could be the case?
In B1, no.
Everyone's basically gonna disappear. So like for us to jump through hoops for I1 when it's gonna disappear.
Right, but we haven't, hasn't yet.
Yeah, there, there is not a heck of a lot of I1 that's, that's residential at this point. There's very little of it.
I understood, I guess I misunderstood the, the conversation we were having last week. It seemed to be last week. Marie, one of the concerns you raised was, well, they're not, they're not in the same building, so they won't observe the same impacts.
Well, I think the situation that was described last week was that an owner decamped from their residence and moved into an accessory building. For the, the term of the short-term rental.
Illegal if they didn't have a certificate of occupancy for the accessory, accessory building.
But there's no requirement that they have a certificate of occupancy for the accessory apartment in, in this code.
So that's what I'm saying, why not make that a requirement?
But no, I, I, sorry Kathleen, my primary concern is an accessory building is not supposed to be used as a residence in an R1 district, period.
Whether, whether for the host or for the, the renter. Either way. Yeah, they're, they're like garages and they're like, you know, sheds and that kind of stuff.
Is there a scenario in which any exist in the village that currently have certificates of occupancy in an R1?
Kathleen, I can't answer that question.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. That would be a question that maybe
I'm, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just wondering about, I'm wondering about those that function as short-term rentals now, in accessory buildings, if those are habitable structures and if they have certificates of occupancy now.
Well, certainly, the inspection will turn to
I'd like to leave this in, I don't think we should be using short-term accessory buildings for short-term rentals. Tweeps, in or out?
I guess I would say I don't know, I would keep it in, I think.
Okay, stays in. Short-term rentals cannot, but another, this is for both hosted and unhosted. I don't know why it would only be for unhosted Kathleen. I thought this was for hosted and unhosted.
Let me remember why I was asking the question. Oh, that's if, if we were, if we were if we were only limiting unhosted. But we, that's already been moved beyond, so you can take that one out.
Cannot be located within three hundred linear feet. Okay, the same, same argument Kathleen, only unhosted, but we're not gonna
Well, one of the things I was thinking about over, over the last week is the regulatory structure and what we're going to be able to manage. And wondering if in the case of hosted short-term rentals, where a resident is on premises and can address impacts, whether the whether the question of limits and linear separation are as critical for hosted as they are for unhosted.
No, I would, I would counter argue that short-term rentals, regardless of whether they're hosted or unhosted, will have additional parking on the street, they will have additional people walking through the neighborhood, they will be generating additional garbage, regardless of whether or not it's correctly managed. So I don't see why we would not impose the limits for both hosted and unhosted.
If you have on the street, an unhosted, short-term rental and the limits for that is three hundred feet, would you, how could you allow a hosted one in between the three hundred feet, just sort of annual place? And, and then like, the, the markings and the regulations and the, the distancing, it's just going to be one after the other, after the other.
Well, I, I was trying, I was trying to think about the, the feedback we have had about hosted, unhosted, being the type of short-term rental that seems to be the driver of disruption and neighborhood interruption.
You know, I, I mean, I, I know you keep saying that and I, I'm, I'm not sure that's totally fair for people who are doing unhosted. Because while there may be some unhosteds that have problems, and I, I know there are. There may be many that don't have problems. There may be some hosteds that have problems too. I'm not sure at this point, I mean, other than the fact that we're, we're giving, you know, we're adding some more additional short-term rentals because of the hosted, unhosted that we've, that we've come up with.
I guess I'm thinking about the case of the, the, in the hosted situation, someone is available to address the issue, where an unhosted, they're not.
They are.
They are, we're in twenty minutes, right?
Yeah, according to the regulations, they have to be on. I would
It's getting, it's getting toward eight o'clock.
Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna clear this one. I promise you by the next time we get together, I will combine these two. And we'll have one document that we can look at clearly.
And could, could I ask, just, just for planning purposes, we, why did we switch to Wednesday this week? Is that
Because we had another meeting at six o'clock and it was easy to go six to six, seven, and then seven to eight.
Okay, because our, our standing practice is that we meet for two hours on code, and so I'm surprised that we're only meeting for an hour.
Okay, typically, the way we were set up before we, you know, against the, the eight ball with the code is our general of code, yeah, our general board meetings are for second and fourth Tuesday of the month.
Right.
This happens to be the third Tuesday of the month, so we would typically not have a meeting. And typically, on the twenty ninth, we wouldn't have a meeting either, because that would be an off an off week. So it's usually for a second and fourth, because of the code stuff, we've been trying to squeeze in whatever we can squeeze in.
Right, on Tuesday, not Wednesday.
We don't, we don't typically do Thursdays either, but we've been doing Thursdays for codes. And it just happened to be, yeah, this was gonna be a free week and then we just jumped in.
Yeah, it was a surprise, that's all. And I think it was a surprise to the public as well, who anticipates that we meet on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
I wanted to, I wanted to have a week off, but unfortunately, we're up against the eight ball here, so.
Okay, so that's it for tonight. We didn't get to approve the minutes, we'll do that the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna close the meeting. So I make a motion to adjourn.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, thank you, everybody.
See you next Tuesday. Thank you.